Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order. This is the City Council Study Session 6:30 PM, 6:35 on Tuesday, October 13th, 2020. This is the call to order, and actually, we are going to take call this evening. And I'm just going to read off our names, so Councilmember Stewart. If you could say yea or nay that you're online.
Sorry, just took me a second.
Okay, she's here. Councilmember Trinh.
Present.
Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Ross. Councilmember Ritchie. Councilmember Gamblin.
Present.
Great, I think we have everyone. Okay, meeting accessibility. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. To view live, city website www.samamish.us/tv21. City YouTube is https://www.youtube.com. And then you can look for the rest of that on our city website and Comcast Channel 21 within the city of Samamish only. And if you would like to view the meeting later, meeting videos are available the day after the meeting on the city website again at www.samamish.us/tv21 and at YouTube and at Comcast TV 21 within Samamish only. Public comment. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. Written comment. Written public comment will be accepted until 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Submit your written comments by email to thecityclerk@samamish.us and the citycouncil@citycouncil@samamish.us. Verbal comment. Up to three minutes of verbal public comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. Call the following number and input the access code when prompted by 6:30 PM the day of the meeting. The phone number is 1-571-317-3122. The access code is 929-348-197. Once you have joined, you will be placed on mute. The meeting operator will unmute when it is your turn to comment. You will hear an automated voice say "unmuted" when that occurs, and the operator will ask you to begin your comment. Lita, how many calls do we have this evening?
Yes, we have four callers tonight.
Okay.
I see that we have four people who have called in tonight to provide public comment.
Excellent.
I will unmute callers in the order they have joined the meeting. When it is your turn, you will hear an automated voice say "unmuted," and you will have three minutes to provide public comment. Please start your comment by stating your name, the city you live in, for the record. I will now unmute the first caller. Caller number one, are you there?
Yes, this is Mary Witter, and I have lived in the city of Samamish for over 20 years. Honorable City Council members and city staff, I did send in written public comment, specifically regarding the impact from upland area that the city has been experiencing for flooding, flashy flows, and sending stronger storm surges that washed sediment down to the Zaccoose Basin. There have been cumulative impacts from city permitted development that also increased flow duration as well as the intensity which end up in Zaccoose Creek, and they primarily come from the Tamarack plat. There have also been multiple landslides that have occurred in critical areas. Severe flooding and drainage issues have been reported since 2013, each rainstorm October to May, and will continue until the stormwater issues are addressed. Tamarack has had 126 homes, roads, and ditches in culverts that worked okay at 60% development under King County, but drainage issues have been presented as Tamarack became 80% developed under the city, and it is still growing by infill. And that means more new single-family homes are being added, and there is just not adequate infrastructure, particularly for storm drainage. Thirty-seven new single-family homes have been built in Tamarack since 2007. They were permitted, or since 2000 when the city incorporated. They were permitted by the city, and flow control was not added, and there's been at least two acres of impervious surface due to roofs, driveways, and porches, et cetera. The R4 size lots were planted in 1964, but since they were one acre or less, the city chose to use older 1998 King County Code versus 2009, which allowed homes to build without flow control or even drainage review until January 1st of 2017. Now, using old code is simply not best available science, which is required for critical areas and protection of life and property. Having a high 5,000-square-foot drainage review threshold versus the 2,000-square-foot drainage review threshold means that flow control is not required nor with water quality treatment, and house after house, the cumulative impacts of more homes has truly added up. In order to ensure Zaccoose Creek is successful and for best opening salmon recovery, we have to do as possible work identified for the Wisconsin Road to properly handle overflow from these four streets both that is 210th Avenue and consider water quality and add detention near 200. You do know about these projects. They were identified in the Zaccoose Basin Plan, which was adopted already, and they are the project for the point and policy priority that the City Council wanted. I also understand that stormwater funds have adequate budget for future planning and project, the city manager's preliminary budget money, and that it's always an option for City Council to redirect general fund money to immediate CIP lists and also add to that list. I've also learned that a capital improvement project cannot qualify or even look grant funding unless the CIP is listed with at least some funding provided, so I'm asking you to make and consider those changes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
I will now unmute caller number two. You are unmuted.
Hi, this is Aurora Mitter. I was calling in most people that I could actually kind of hear from the comments. I had submitted comments to the council regarding similar issues to the last caller, which just affecting it had to do with drainage, as well as the building of the last four building blocks that are located within what was once a designated concern with these zones, which have now been granted, building a permit on all four lots. I know the last lot that is waiting to have a house built just needs to issue a building permit. It does have a fish-bearing stream that runs down the lake. In fact, they had to shock it when they built the trail, and we, I don't know, did actually pay for a fish-bearing culvert to ensure the passage, but somehow we still were able to gain a building permit. I know that it was a real estate agent that actually bought the property, was considered Paul Property when it was given the variance to do the building. He purchased it at $300,000, sold it for over $1.5 million after gaining the variance because no one believed that the city had actually granted the right to build. It has been denied under previous planners up until roughly 2016, whenever the city borrowers' disposition was eliminated. Prior to that, all four lots had been limited or denied building, and had actually been under environmental protection to prevent building on them. The city did not purchase the two lots that go to the south of the three existing homes that had existed, had existing building permits before 1980, prior to the city's actual incorporation. However, the city's Terry Examiner has now allowed building on almost every one of the 13 lots, whether they are a four box that are not necessarily connected to short pressure connections that are contiguous, and/or have been able to rebuild old box, and like I imagine, two houses to the north and two houses to the south, the lots have now been built, all of which did have streams prior to the building of the trail that were considered to be fish-bearing until the actual remodel ties were removed. And then it is which determined that no tests have been done since 2005, so they're getting determined to be fish-bearing stream, simply because no reports have been done. I know it's in the WRIH water shed, this area covered over 600 feet of mini shelly, all of which now is private in private hands, and is building massive homes on every lot, which is very concerning that each one of them is requiring over eight feet of wall just to hold the land back because the land in and of itself is not solid. In fact, we...
Okay, I'm going to need you to finish your thought.
Even when they tried to build the trail, the walls collapsed, and they had to rebuild it even on our property, just a pure wall.
Okay.
And I'll finish that, and I'll submit some comments more than anything one of them looks like.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now unmute caller number three. Caller number three. Are you there? I will now unmute caller number four. Hello, caller number four? Caller number four, are you there? Thank you.
Okay, well, we probably have a lot of problems with the phones with the winds, so.
That's all for public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Back to you.
Okay, next we have executive session, so potential to litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101II, and litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101I. They're anticipating 40 to 45 minutes, so what time is it now? It is 6:49. Why don't we say until 7:30? Welcome back, council. We are back to the City Council Study Session for October 13th, 2020, and the next up is our discussion on our 2021-2022 preliminary budget review. And I'm going to turn that over to our...
To the city manager.
City manager.
All right, Mayor. Members of council, thank you. Tonight on the agenda bill, the only item on the agenda is the discussion of the 2021-2022 preliminary budget review. And the council should consider and deliberate on any further adjustments after our presentation that they would like to make and provide that direction to the city manager so that those adjustments can be made before the council considers taking action on the 21-22 budget ordinance. The 2021-2022 budget ordinance will not come before the council for action until November, and action can only occur after both public hearings have taken place on November 10th and again on November 17th. So I'm going to hit some of the highlights of the budget message that I put out, and then Aaron Anton, our finance director, is going to go through some of the numbers in a presentation that we have for you tonight, and then we'll bring it back for any questions and direction that you may have. So I've submitted the biennial budget for 2021-2022 to the council. The budget is balanced and in line with all statutory requirements, and is in alignment with the council's priorities as I see them. The budget tries to recognize the realities of municipal financing and steers away from recommendations that uses reserves to balance the budget. It recognizes the increasing demands for city services and the corresponding cost of those services associated with providing the necessary services in the community. The fiscal year 21-22 biennial budget totals $235,901... Excuse me, $235,000... Excuse me, I can't read. $235,901,764. You thought we were going to get by on the cheap, right? All right. An examiner of this budget reveals a general fund and street fund operational budget of $120,179,488 with transfers, and a 2022 ending budget balance of $27,367,000. Parks, transportation, stormwater, utility, and general capital expenditures total approximately $56 million and some change, with a combined ending fund balance of $20,410,949. It's been a challenging few years for the city council with considerable turnover in key management positions here in Samamish, which often results in lost productivity, inconsistencies in management styles, and generally leads to less than optimal performance of the organization as a whole. It's been a challenging place for all of us as the advent of the worldwide major pandemic COVID-19 has significantly impacted our economy, social behaviors, and none of us have ever, ever experienced. I have found the employees genuine in their spirit of public service, and it's my honor and privilege to serve with them and to serve you in this community. Every citizen... Excuse me, every city has its own sets of goals and objectives and a style of budgeting that has usually been refined and tested over time, but I've found that the turnover in city managers and the complexities of the Growth Management Hearing Board remand, the city's recent history of concurrency issues, and transportation infrastructure, and coping with and adopting to remote city operations has been particularly unique set of challenges. While not perfect, because nothing is, I've tried to present to you a budget that more directly presents the necessary expenses and recognizes new revenues that correlate to the increases in the budget that have been occurring over the last several years. Although the budget is stated in numbers, it represents an action plan for the city's fiscal 21-22 period. The plan contains funding for the core elements of the city council's priorities and is a blueprint for accountability and measuring results. While the previous biennial budget was focused on addressing some of the operational and staffing deficiencies that the council wanted to address, this budget has some minor tweaks to that plan, and with only a few additional staff increases that are primarily covered within the existing budget. The budget is much lighter on major projects, recognizing the limited funding that is available without council's acknowledgement and action. We do not have a six-year tip or a six-year CIP this year. We did not want to prejudice the Growth Management Hearing Board remand process by appearing to direct or otherwise predetermine any traffic infrastructure projects that might influence the Jaren matter process. It's a bit awkward from what the council is used to, but entirely legal and within the accepted budgetary processes allowed under state law. It further highlights for the council the limited funding availability for certain projects which can be addressed later on next year or on a project-by-project basis as determined by the council review and action. Budget highlights. The city has grown significantly over the last few years and has just celebrated its 20th birthday. The city has now reached a population of over 65,000, and it is reflected in the demand for services, park space demand, and traffic management. As we have adjusted to fill the 16 and a half new full-time positions that were approved in the previous biennial budget, this biennial budget has just three positions added in 2021 and a fourth added in 2022. The city is adding three full-time equivalents, but is only adding one as an additional cost, which is a management analyst that will support the reorganization of the personnel that support the administrative services, a position that was vacated and left unfilled nearly two years ago. Turnover in management has left several administrative positions vacant and resulted in the city taking on more compliance and internal controls, compliance risk, with further limited operational processes oversight and oversight. I hope to see those things corrected. We've worked hard at filling our vacancies and redirecting positions that have been vacant for some time into positions that we think will produce a more effective approach to handling some of the operational exposure that we've had. The two other positions, two full-time equivalents, will be a result of eliminating the outside legal counsel base contract and transitioning those duties to a primary city attorney in an in-house capacity and the new paralegal to go along with that position. So there won't be any cost increase for that. The city will improve efficiencies, accountability, and add the in-house support to the executive team and the city council that a city this size can benefit from. The legal services budget has been adjusted. We've reviewed all of the accounts in there, and we've found that we can do cost containment without a reflective increase in the budget with that staffing. The one additional FTE added in 2022 will be for a full-time mechanic so as to support the increasing need to ensure our fleet of vehicles are adequately maintained. We do that all by contract right now, and I think we've reached a point where we need to bring in a full-time mechanic and supplement that with contractual assistance. The budget continues to emphasize contracting our major services. Samamish contracts with the King County Sheriff's Office for police services. The city completed a police services study in 2018 that reflected an increase in staffing to provide better coverage and response to growth in the town center area. Whereas the town center development has lagged behind in projections, now we've seen an increased call for service that has been trending upwards, and the very lean staffing plan has revealed vulnerabilities that call for increased staffing. The budget recommends the addition of a supervisor, that is a sergeant, and two additional patrol officers, and one additional school resource officer. The school resource officer was requested by the Lake Washington School District and is supported in part by their funding contribution. While COVID has impacted in-person school attendance, the city has benefited from the existing two SROs to supplement our staffing and reduce our vacancy and reduce our overtime. The additional SRO will be used in the same fashion if school openings are further delayed, but we are planning and selecting the people to fill those vacancies so that they are assigned and ready for deployment when schools get back in session. We've been carrying three and three-quarter full-time equivalent vacancies due to current budgeting and staffing requirements of the King County Sheriff's Office, an issue that contract cities, including us, are having to cope with and address with the sheriff's The city continues to contract with fire protection with Eastside Fire and Rescue and for their emergency medical services and fire protection, as well as transport, fire and life safety planning, as well as for the emergency management services, which was transferred to EFOR mid-budget in February of 2020. All of these public safety services are now budgeted through contracts with Eastside Fire and Rescue. The budget reflects a deferral of maintenance and capital planned in the EFOR budget and is reflected in this biennial budget at a cost reduction, but we need to keep in mind that we'll have to watch those closely when the 2023 budget and 2024 budget, biennial budget, comes from EFOR again. And the chief is here to address any concerns or adjustments in that budget that are reflected in this budget. This budget recognizes some additional capital expenditures that will be necessary to address some of the major repairs and upgrades at its fire stations. Fire stations have been budgeted for the last several years as complete rebuilds. I've tried to take a real close look at that so that we can avoid spending nearly $45 million over the next several years by retrofitting our stations and bringing them into compliance with more livability and work within our budget to address deficiencies, and we should be able to address those over the next few years. The city has been reflecting the total cost of rebuilds for all three fire stations in its long-term CIP, and as I mentioned, I hope to be able to avoid doing that going forward. We're budgeting for an architectural review for two of the fire stations and some major repair upgrades in one of the fire stations for a total of $3.5 million in this biennial budget. The 2021-22 budget strikes an efficient balance of funding for permanent positions, which will be sustained for the long term, contractual services, which will address short-term, and service demand surges that are expected to continue the next few years. The city has invested significant sums in its infrastructure over the past several years, ensuring that many infrastructure needs have been addressed. However, there is still a significant inventory of infrastructure needs yet to be addressed, and the staff is taking inventory on how best to address many of these over the next several years. Our capital budgets are limited to restricted funds available so that the council can take a more revealing look at funding sources without the subsidy of the general fund. This is always an option for the city council to redirect general fund and general fund reserve monies in its immediate list of CIP projects that add to that list. Despite all of the investment in the infrastructure and the acquisition of additional parkland and facility upgrades, residents continue to pay lower taxes than those living in the unincorporated King County. From a financial overview standpoint, the 21-22 budget maintains the city's strong financial position with an ending fund balance of some $50,824,920, with $27,367,000 of that in the city's general fund. This strong ending position comes at the conclusion of a biennium that will sustain operations, increase public safety investments and resources, and see several major transportation and stormwater infrastructure projects constructed on a pay-as-you-go basis without the issue of debt. While $50 million is a sizable balance, it must be recognized that nearly $23.4 million is planned for future capital, fleet, facilities, and risk management and IT infrastructure needs, and is not budgeted to be available for any unrestricted or general operational expenses. Of the approximate $27.4 million that is available to the general fund, nearly $5 million of that is dedicated to the council's strategic reserve. The remaining one-time projected fund balance could be further reserved for capital infrastructure needs, emergency reserves, or operational sustainability in the future, given uncertainties of the potential growth in public safety contracts or moving forward. There is considerable discussion and debate over the infrastructure needs for traffic, stormwater management, and the need to begin investing in our facilities, city hall, park facilities, as we do not have a dedicated fund for accumulation to address city facilities. Many and many of them are now in need of upgrade and repairs. While our stormwater funds have an adequate budget for future planning and projects, our transportation-related infrastructure is extremely limited in its revenue sources. Capital funds are limited to certain areas and projects and not available to address the broader number of deficiencies the council has expressed concern over. The normal annual adoption of a six-year transportation improvement plan would solidify the council's desires for what particular projects get consideration for funding in an upcoming biennial budget. However, this year, we are concerned with how we approach the challenges of meeting the Growth Management Hearing Board's remand and the city's concurrency evaluation tools. The city council decided to wait for a decision from the Growth Management Hearing Board before identifying long-term capital transportation projects beyond this two-year budget. The city can revisit this process at any time to discuss the longer-range transportation projects, but this budget only addresses projects for the next two-year term of the budget within the limited amount of capital funding that has been forecasted for 2021- budget within the limited amount of capital funding that has been forecasted for 2021 and 2022 period. Our street resurfacing, sidewalk repair, and ADA improvement programs are heavily reliant upon the general fund sources. Working closely with Public Works and using our pavement management program, I've reduced the funding for these particular program areas to help get the budget balanced, but still keeping a healthy $3.1 million in that budget going forward, and I plan to explore a broader range of options for maintaining our streets more cost-effectively while maintaining a high pavement management index rating. We will not threaten our high pavement index rating standard over the next two years and will still be able to extend the life of many of our streets without complete resurfacing. There are a handful of streets that have been neglected since the city's incorporation that may require complete rebuilding. We are recommending that we shift some of our available funds to these sites to begin addressing these neglected streets. On a scale in the pavement management program, just an editorial comment, that rates from one to 100, the higher the number, the better the condition of the street. Some of these neglected streets have a current rating of three, which is rather appalling. So we're recommending that we shift some of those available funds, and the cost of resurfacing as a primary option has risen significantly over the past several years, along with the price of oil, and this project area is yet another contributing factor to the growing service expenses where we have deferred raising revenues, that is property taxes, to assist in addressing these rising costs. We've been using the general fund reserves to do that, and we've had enough budgeted surpluses to be able to address it, but that crossover is beginning to zero out. The proposed budget still keeps $6.34 million in these limited line item to address some of the problematic and long-deferred street repairs, as well as a considerable contribution to the ADA sidewalk-related repairs. Revenues. The Washington State economic forecast is uncertain, primarily due to the unknown long-term impacts of COVID-19, a worldwide pandemic issue. There has been widespread economic impacts from COVID-19 on sales tax. However, Samamish has been less impacted because it relies on sales tax to a much lesser degree than our surrounding communities. Whereas we've seen a decrease in sales tax revenues from construction-related sales tax, we have had a moratorium on most new construction for the last several months. We estimate that the overall sales tax impact to be about $400,000 drop in sales tax revenue from 2020 to 2021. Sales tax losses from small businesses in our community has been short-lived as the restrictions on travel and occupancy have been lessened markedly by the governor and the legislature as the pandemic has continued. There has been an uptake in online sales, which appears to be overtaking any shorter-term losses that we have maybe originally impacted and forecasted to impact our revenue stream. We'll continue to monitor this with a part of our regular financial management reporting and review processes. Our primary tax revenues are generated from property tax. At this point in time, the pandemic has not had a direct measurable impact on property taxes, but can result in delayed new construction levy recognition in the future. Construction in the region has continued to stay active, and there is no sign that housing demands will diminish anytime soon. Samamish is seeing a push from local developers to acquire and process lots that have had significant challenges of access and terrain, so it is not difficult to conclude that they see that there is a lot of value in our dirt here in Samamish. And there is a lot of pent-up demand in the region for buildable lands. We have seen that property sales transactions, however, are down as our real estate excise tax revenues, which are down approximately $1 million from 2019 as we prepare this budget. We are hopeful that the city's historical experience with the late-year sales will help in the months to come. However, COVID-19 may be impacting the sales of real estate in ways we are not yet understanding or able to forecast. The cost of public safety services, along with many services in our parks and traffic management, have grown significantly in the past four years due to service demands for our growing population. If we look just at police and fire department service demands, we can see that our budgets have grown to support this demand, including the recommendations in this biennial budget. And those combined budgets have grown at $2.1 million for police services and .8 million annually for fire over the last couple of years and looking forward two years. From this 2021-22 budget, it recommends a property tax increase to help pay for the expanding services and the growing budgets necessary to sustain our growing population, rather than placing a higher reliability on economic trends and overall utilizing reserves. I am recommending that we achieve a more balanced budget approach, recognizing the full banked capacity that has not been utilized for the past 11 years. This budget recommends that the city recognize the real cost for increased services that have occurred over the last several years, but that have been absorbed by running a very lean operations that don't recognize the full cost of some of the operations and then underspending the budget expectations in order to balance. I do not recommend that the city continue to do this, but rather provide a sustainable source of revenue to pay for the full costs necessary to deliver the high level of services, many of which are contracted, that the council and the Samamish community has come to expect. Whereas utilizing the full amount of the property banked capacity from prior years may sound shocking and overburdenousome, in fact, it only amounts to approximately $145 annually, not monthly, but annually, for a Samamish property valued at $900,000. Therefore, the actual fiscal impact of approximately $145 annually in the example provided produces approximately $2.4 million annually to the city, which significantly contributes to a more properly balanced operational budget of revenues and expenses. Expenditures. In this category, the fiscal year 21-22 expenditure budget reflects an operational cost decrease, but only because the budget does not contain many of the large capital expenditures, as were identified in the previous 2019-20 budget. It is still reflective of many key maintenance and capital items to keep us from falling behind, and it addresses the need to maintain roads and parks infrastructure systems. Contracted fire service will remain stable, but as noted, the EFOR budget defers some capital and maintenance issues until 23-24 so as to keep costs lower for agencies more significantly impacted by the pandemic. Police services are increasing by about $2.5 million to reflect some of the recommended staffing increases for the additional sergeant, two patrol officers, and the additional school resource officers, and that 2.5 is over the next two years. Expenses should be accounted for as accurately as possible, in my beliefs. I have eliminated the $3 million in budgeted contingency expenses that the city has historically done annually, as I believe it distorts the actual expenditures and requires the use of general fund reserves to balance the operational needs, forcing the city into what I refer to as a deficit budgeting. The council may decide that some contingency dollars may be needed in the realm of $300 to $500,000 to give flexibility, but I believe that the $3 million is entirely too high, and I've chosen to eliminate it entirely from the budget. For large expenses, the city council can make appropriations on a case-by-case basis. Expenditure increases in the CIP funds reflect the anticipated delivery of several capital projects, which I've listed out and include school turf, field turf replacement on a couple fields for $6.4 million, the athletic fields at $5 million, complete the Issaquah Fall City Road Phase One project for about $2 million, $2.55 million, Sahali projects, and there are a number of small ones for about $2 million, and the George Davis Creek Fifth Passage for about $2.45 million. In conclusion, the 2021-22 biennial budget addresses priorities identified by the city council from their retreat in January of 2020, earlier this year, and throughout the discussions that were held on the transportation improvement-related improvements related to the TIP discussions and the twos and threes discussions on park improvements and the preliminary budget sessions on capital projects and revenue forecasts that we held in August. I appreciate this opportunity to prepare and submit to you for review a recommended budget that is modestly addressing a need for new additional staff and for internal accountability and best practices, and recommends essential increases in police services with three additional officers and an SRO, and recommends the creation of an internal city attorney position and the supportive paralegal with no correspondent increase in cost. It also recommends the recognition of 11 years' bank capacity, which I mentioned is a modest $145 approximately annually on a $900,000 property, and it also reflects a tuning up of our actual and projected expenses with corresponding revenues that do not rely on the general fund subsidies for ongoing operations. I'll turn it now over to Aaron Anton, who is going to take you through a summary of our fiscal numbers in a presentation that we prepared. Thank you.
So just a brief reminder of the statutory timing of the budget process and what it's guided by RCWs in the state of Washington. So the RCW 35A 34070 that talks about the proposed preliminary biennial budget, again a reminder that that has to be filed, this is an internal filing with the city manager, so after the budget call to department directors, that filing has to occur by October 1st. Again, you'll remember that that occurred far earlier than that in order to prepare for that draft look that council took a look at in August on both the capital and operating budgets. RCW 35A 34080 is the filing of the preliminary budget, and the statute requires that that be done by November 1st. Again, that was done in advance of that deadline. Council did receive that preliminary budget filing, which was the city manager's budget, and that was done on October 6th, and that triggers the noticing requirement that's also required by statute. Two consecutive weeks of public noticing prior to a public hearing on the budget that's been filed by the city manager, so that date, as a reminder that Dave mentioned that earlier, November 10th and November 17th, the two public hearings for the budget and the property tax, related property tax ordinance. Just an overview of the timing, again, the same slide that we looked at in August, just talking about the two-year process that the city uses. It's a biennial budget that we adopt here in the city of Samamish. And then the bottom of that chart takes a look at the overall timeline, what's happening throughout the budget or throughout the calendar year and the budget actions that occur, council reviewing in September and October, and budget hearing and adoption coming up here in November and December. Quick review of all of the different inputs that have been collected as part of what the city manager considered in his filing of the preliminary budget and bringing all of that information together. Again, a lot of different entities and inputs that compose this, including the public safety contract inputs, being that we have both contracted police and contracted fire for the city. We also had those August meetings that I mentioned previously, August 11th and 18th on both capital and operations inputs, and those reviews that were done. At that time, we took a look at the per capita revenue and per capita expense, which is an external comparison set of charts that we use against our east side cities that council typically looks at, the five east side cities, and that data was 2017 data. So what we've done is we've updated that data, and the next chart's gonna roll into that update. So here's the population numbers for 2020 for those six different entities, Samamish and five other east side communities. The first look is on the revenues per capita, so this is updated 2019 data. Again, the same general profile still exists. The sources for Samamish on a per capita basis in 2019 remain that same, where we're not utilizing the utility or BNO tax capacity that's available to cities. Other jurisdictions are. And then property taxes, we've already mentioned that there was not previously utilization of the bank capacity, but that was reserved, and so the property taxes were not levied at the full allowable amounts in those prior years. On the expenditure side, the per capita expenditure, again, 2019 updated, still same profile that exists on this one, and this is just the general areas of expenditure. This data comes from the state auditor's office, and so they have a new tool they call the FIT Tools, the Financial Intelligence Tool. They just redid the database that collects that information. These are the bars accounts that each of these communities use in their financial reporting, so we're able to level set for these comparisons on general fund per capita revenues and expenditures.
Aaron, I'm sorry, is there a PowerPoint being shown?
Yes.
Okay, we cannot see it.
Some of us can. What's...
I can't see it. Pam, you're muted. I see you talking, but you're muted.
Christie, there's a way to kind of adjust, because there are a lot of people on the meeting. Are you sure that you have the little bar so that you're seeing what's being presented and not just seeing all of the people at the top?
Oh, I'm on my phone. So I don't... If there's a way to do it, I just can't see the PowerPoint.
Oh, yeah, we're seeing it, sorry.
Can someone email it to me, Ben? Try to maybe follow along? Is that possible?
Mike Suggs is gonna email it to you.
Awesome, thank you.
Hey, Christie, this is Jason. Swipe right or left on your phone, I'm in the same condition. If you swipe left or right on your screen, there's two dots at the top.
Thank you, Jason.
Yep.
So the slide that's up right now is just a general overview of the different fund categories that according to the BAR system, which is the state-issued budgeting, accounting, and reporting system. So this is the system accounts that cities must comply with for the state. So there's different fund categories that we categorize our funds into, general operations, capital, proprietary, and internal service funds. So this chart just lists out those different categories as a reminder of how we look at these costs. The next chart, is it flipping? There we go, is an org chart of those same different categories, just a little different format and showing it, so you can see which ones are capital funds, operation funds, and then the general categories of governmental funds and proprietary funds. Again, this is in accordance with BARs. So what we did is we took the dollars into those same fund categories, and this compares the 2019-2020 budget with the 21-22 city manager budget. So the top row in those same fund categories of capital, operations, proprietary, debt service, and then the ending fund balance would be that, those different categories for both the 1920 budget and the 21-22 budget. So when Dave was doing an overview of the total budget for 21-22 of $235 million, that's shown in that first category, and then as you look along the rest of that row, you see what composes that $235 million. There's $31 million in capital, for example, $120 million in operations, and so forth. So the next row looks at the increase or decrease as a comparison of the 1920 biennial budget and this proposed 21-22 budget. So you can see just from a total budget standpoint, we're going down nearly $19 million from $254 million down to $235 million. And then you can look across the different categories of what's happening across those different categories. So although it's a decrease in total, the capital is driving that major decrease because there's a lot less capital investments occurring in the 21-22 biennium than what happened as budgeted in the 1920 biennium, for example. We took a look at kind of diving... We took a look at, kind of diving deeper into these areas of capital and operations at the August meetings. If you recall, both of those, one of them was devoted toward the capital and the other towards the operations. So we took a look at both of those as well as fund balances. We had some discussion on reserve levels, so that was all part of those August preview of that. One other note that's here just as an added metric is an inflationary increase note. So if you were to look at the operations budget, for example, that 117 million was the operation budget in 1920 as compared to the 120 million is the request for 2122. But if you took the 117 million and just applied the four-year average CPIU, that number would have gone to 123.9 million versus the 120.2 million. So you're less than that inflationary metric in the operations category, for example. It's just a way to look at an inflationary increase and what it could be. So the next chart is actually out of the packet, so this is just a copy of what's shown on page one that shows the 1920 budget. The reason I've included here is when we move forward into November, you'll see this as an attachment to the budget ordinance itself. This was the last one for the last budget ordinance that was done for 1920. And again, a reminder that the 2020 revised budget showed those fund balance and we had discussion on that previously. The new picture for the 2122 Table A, as a result of the inputs that were shown included in the packet, and then Dave mentioned earlier, the general fund ending fund balance, that number is 27.3 million. That's composed of a strategic reserve is included in that number. So if you took out the 4.9 million, the rest of it is the ending fund balance just for the general fund, then in total, it's the $50 million number. So major adjustments, this is just a repeat of what Dave mentioned earlier. There are some, first off, level of service adjustments that were made in the area of police services. We talked about the sergeant, the two officers, and a third school resource officer or SRO. We talked about the pavement preservation program and the reduced funding level that's occurring in 2122 as compared to the last budget period. And then in the facilities and maintenance, there was a mix of one-time and ongoing contracts. So we'll talk a little bit more about that later. And then the addition of a mechanic in 2022. Then the revenue forecast itself, we had an update on that in August. We were looking at the slowing of those development revenue and sales taxes that Dave had highlighted. And then the adjustment being made here in this package, which was the leveling of the bank capacity in order to pay for those public safety expense increases that are listed there up above. There was also included in this budget is we are retaining the 10% strategic reserve. So that's still fully in place. And then there's a cautionary note, Dave mentioned this as well, that there's a level of reserve that you might consider as council for what amount of reserve above that base 10% strategic reserve do you want to keep available for longer-term capital needs as you make those decisions moving forward into the budget period and beyond. So when you're looking at that six-year capital horizon, so you have infrastructure needs that are out there, and it's a consideration to reserve in advance for some of those one-time related costs. We highlighted earlier the fire station costs. Again, that was down from initial projections, but there is an adjustment that's included in this budget to move 3.5 million from the general fund to the general facilities capital fund to pay for those three fire station renovations. So you'll see that included in the details of the budget. There was also the adjustment for the added city attorney and paralegal positions. So that shows up as additional FTEs, so authorized FTE count goes up by those two positions. From a dollar standpoint, the same budget that was used in 2020, that 1.77 million, was used for 21 and 2022. So it kept the dollars level and then just netted out the addition of those costs from the overall legal services budget. So that's a transition to in-house legal services is what that adjustment composed of. Some other adjustments that were made, just so you're aware of the first one there, we merged the public works portion of the street fund operations into the general fund. So previously, these were held as two separate funds, the street fund and the general fund, and we're merging those together so they're all kept in one spot. It's all operations-related, and so that's why it's in the one area, and it's considered to increase the visibility and transparency of those operating costs moving forward. Another adjustment that was made that we talked about back in August, and that just continued, was the reduction in the level of capital investments related to transportation parks and facilities projects and primarily capital projects. So in looking back, a five-year historical look at our general and street fund operations, we had looked at this slide earlier in August, just shows the structural balance and financially sustained operations in one graph when we're just looking at the operations picture. So the green bar is the revenues. The expenses are in red, and you had the positive performance that was occurring over that most recent history. Then we looked in August, and you'll see that that draft budget that we were looking at in August, the expenditure, the ongoing expenditures did rise above the revenues, and we're looking at lower revenues as a result of the softening in sales tax and development revenues and other factors there. Again, we weren't utilizing any new revenues in that picture when we're looking at August. So the next slide updates this picture for the increase in use of the bank capacity for property tax, as well as the adjustments that were made to expenditures to bring them back into alignment. So structurally throughout the next two years, this budget period, we're back into that ongoing revenues versus ongoing expense balance. Here is that graph basically in numbers. So this looks at each of the departments. So same slide that we had looked at previously, but it's updated for the 2122 numbers, and it's sorted by the largest department amounts first. So police services being the 8.8 million in the 21 budget and 9 million in 22. That 8.8 includes the additions that we talked about. So you're increasing your level contracted police services and then parks and facilities, public works, and so forth. So you go down to total expenses. Again, these expenses are including one-time costs. So we'll make mention of that again when we start diving a little further into these operations by department. But total expenses with one-time costs, 52.1 million and 52.7 for the 21 and 22 periods. If we take out the pavement management program, which is largely considered a one-time cost type of program, expenses go to 48.9 and 49.5. We compare that against the total revenues projected of 49.1 and 49.3, and we have an ending fund balance impact increase in 2021 of .2 and a draw on fund balance of .2 in 2022. So netting out to zero over that two-year period. So that's the operational sustainability metric that we're looking at there. I would add that because we're including one-time costs in those budget numbers, this picture changes slightly if you pull out those other one-time costs and use fund balance to fund those one-time costs, right? So you're actually become a more positive ongoing picture there. We're gonna highlight some of those increases. So we looked at what's increasing from 2020 to the 2021. We're going budget to budget, so in total, we went from 49.1 million to 52. That was an overall increase of 3 million. 1.5 million of that is gonna be one-time costs. So we've gone through each of these to kind of identify which of these are one-time cost related, as well as giving an overview of what's the major drivers of those increases. So first off, police services, we've talked about those position adds, that's 1.1 million. Public works, that area is 1.5 million. Of that 1.5 million increase, $500,000 is related to traffic engineering, replacement of signal cabinets and video detection systems. $392,000 is equipment in public works. So these are F-550 trucks and upgrading some 450s to 550s. So those would be considered one-time related as well as the signal cabinets, you're gonna be one-time purchases. Then we have ongoing contract engineering services, thermoplastic striping. So you see the other ones there, 105,000 for landscaping wetland and maintenance contracts right away. And then the last one there, the recycling-related program expenses are actually covered by grants, but it shows up as an expense on the expenditure side, and the revenue will show the grant revenue that offsets this expense. So the two net out, but it does show up on the expenditure side so that you see that builds up to that 1.5 million explanation. The third area was parks and facilities, so that was a $1 million increase, and that was largely from facilities, maintenance, and repair projects. 600,000 of that 1 million was related to that. And of that 600,000, 400,000 is the fire station 81 apron repair and then other facility repairs. So those could be considered one-time repair costs, and so that's why the 400,000 is being contributed towards that 1.5 million number when we're looking over that period. Park maintenance seasonal positions and equipment account for 110, so the equipment piece is the one-time, that's the 110,000. And then the arts strategic plan was a one-time ask for 50,000 as well. So the blue numbers are all adding up to that 1.5 million. So you can see of that 3 million increase, 1.5 million of it, for example, would be, could be considered one-time. In the area of personnel, we mentioned previously this, the FTE adds, when we're tracking that along, the management analyst, the city attorney and paralegal, we talked about, the mechanics being added just in 2022. And then there was a conversion of some four-month positions to eight-month or to six-month positions, eight-six-month positions, and that's in the park maintenance area. So the conversion of those positions occurring there. And that overall FTE count is shown at the bottom, that matches up to what was included in the packet. The 131.25 FTEs in 2020 goes to 134.25 in '21 and 135.24, .25 in 2022. So just highlighting what the city manager discussed previously of what was included in the way that he balanced this budget proposal, reflecting funding for the council's high priority given to public safety, using the bank capacity, limiting the capital projects to available capital funding. So that was the first take at all of those capital funds, both 301, 302, and 340 funds. We retained that 10% strategic reserve target. We moved to in-house legal, retained human service expenses, so those were additional adds that were made and those were retained through the 2122 period, and sustains the overall operations while building the reserves for future periods. So this is an illustration of the property tax. So when we look at bank capacity, this chart was actually updated yesterday. So the King County assessor is the one that provides the assessment amount to the city. So the number that Dave had mentioned in his budget message, that around 145 per year, that's gonna be a little bit different because the actual assessed value that the assessor gives to the city came down in 2021 as compared to 2020. And so that drives up the rate is what that ends up happening. So the numbers will be a little bit different until the assessor finalizes what the city's certified assessed valuation is. But this gives you an illustration, so it's an example of what does it mean for your average homeowner that has a $900,000 home. And the first section of that slide looks at, here's what the 2020 levy rate was, $1.50 per thousand of assessed valuation. That's an annual city tax, coming to the city of 1350 from that home. And in 2021, if you add the 1%, so this is the allowable 1% increase, the levy rate would go to $1.55, and that'd be a 1395 annual tax or a $45 per year increase for that individual $900,000 home. I'll get into the IPD in a second, let's just move to the what if in that scenario, you have the 2020 rate, now take the full bank capacity plus the 1%, then you go to the $1.67 rate per thousand, and that's an annual collection of 1503. So then the difference between the 2020 levy rate and the 2021 levy rate with the bank capacity and 1% is the $153 per year. So that's what this illustration shows. The note there on implicit price deflator, so every year, there is in statute a law about the allowable 1%. It's either a 1% increase or the increase in the implicit price deflator, whichever is less. So if the implicit price deflator is less than 1%, then that's the limit that gets put in. So you have to take, so it so happens that this year, the implicit price deflator came in and was reported at .60%. And so what that does is it triggers a separate need to pass a substantial needs ordinance is what it's called. And this has been done a couple times previously when IPD dropped below 1%. But in order to levy 1%, you need to pass this substantial needs ordinance, and that substantial needs ordinance needs to be passed by a supermajority of council. So that's five voting members of council have to pass that ordinance, and then that allows you to levy up to the 1% instead of the .60 IPD rate for the next tax year. So you're allowing it to go up to that 1% allowable. And then after you've passed the substantial need ordinance, then you can take action on the property tax ordinance and go in and either adopt the 1% or use the bank capacity or whatever action you're contemplating on the property tax. So that's how IPD factors in. It is a little bit additional administration that needs to occur when that does drop below the 1% level. And again, a product of state statute and how that property taxes play out. So that's related to the property tax illustration. We can move on to the capital investments. So this is just looking at the overall different areas of capital investments that are occurring. So transportation first, there's 8.1 million included. Again, the details are in your packet, starting on page 40 shows the line item packet for all the individual projects. We're just pulling out some of the larger ones here. So we've mentioned the Izquah Falls City Road project, there's the Solway projects, and there's ADA right-of-way improvements that are occurring in transportation. Stormwater capital projects, again, line items are available on page 46 of the packet. It goes into each of those individual projects. Some of the larger ones that are occurring in the 2122 period are the George Davis Creek and Ebright Creek Fish Passages, the Hazel Wolf Culvert Improvement, and some other drainage project improvements that are occurring in the Stormwater Capital Fund as well. For Parks Capital Improvement Plan, there's 17.2 million budgeted in 2122, and again, largely Inglewood Middlefield Improvements, land acquisition, the Eastlake turf replacement. These projects are the ones that are included. Further details included in the page 37 of the line item packet, you can go project by project. General capital facilities, we talked about the fire stations previously. All three fire stations have budgeted improvements in the 2122 period. Also have a city hall renovation included in that as well, and further details on page 35 of the line item packet. And these are questions as we get to the end of the presentation, the budget information, things for council to consider. So I'll go ahead and kick it back over to Dave.
Thank you, Aaron, for a thorough review of the budget. So based on the review in the city manager's budget proposed, we listed out a couple of items for discussion and direction. So let me go through those just for a second, and I'll turn it back over to the mayor. So one, should the general fund strategic ending fund balance reserve target of 10%, that is $4.9 million, be maintained or increased? We talked about this at the August study session, and we bring it back for a confirmation. And then number two, are there programs and/or services council would like to add or cut in 2021 or 2022 from the city manager's preliminary budget? And number three, what other direction might you have on our proposed And number three, what other direction might you have on our proposed revenue or expenditure items? Thank you, Mayor, Council, for this opportunity to present the preliminary budget. And Mayor, I'd like to turn it back over to you for control and direction with the other members of the council. Thank you.
Okay, Council, I know we're going to have lots of questions, so I think we're going to do a round robin. I don't know if anybody saw, but Pam Stewart's got this most adorable puppy that, she popped, did everybody see that? It's really cute. She should have to show that again.
It's Emily's puppy.
It's what?
It's Emily's puppy, and we can bring it back anytime, whenever you guys are feeling like you need a little puppy.
There you go. It was adorable. Okay. So I think we're going to do is round robin. If you have nothing to say, just say pass. But I think we're going to do that so that everybody gets a chance to speak. And I think we will start with Deputy Mayor.
I'm going to pass for the moment while I summarize my thoughts here.
And we do have, I want to just mention that we do have all the department heads here. If you've got questions, we also have got both chiefs here tonight. We've got Chief Clark here, and we have got our police chief here, so we have got everybody in the House to answer questions. Okay, so Councilmember Stewart.
Okay, I have a lot, so I'll try to go rather quickly. Let me pull up my notes. The first question I can just throw out while I pull up my other notes is, on this slide, Aaron, that you presented, you said that we would maintain over $700,000 in human services spending? Can you elaborate on what that is and where I'd find that number, 730 per year on human
Sure. The page 20 of the council packet has the Human Services Expenditure Plan, and you'll see the total department expenditures of, of 1.4 million for the '21-'22 budget period. So then it lists the individual line items that add up to that, but that's where all of that numbers come from.
So I'm on page 20, City Council Department expenditures.
Page 20 should be the Social and Human Services Department expenditures. It's, it's the account number that begins with 001050. That's the Social and Human Services Department. So of the 1.4 million in '21 and '22 budgeted, 296,000 is the housing piece, 1.1 million, 1.168,400 is the community services piece, which includes the personnel and the human services grants.
Okay, hold on, let me just, okay, so, I see, so for human services, we've got the salaries and benefits, which I see going down in '21-'22 from 2019, 2020.
They actually go up from 155,200 in 1920 to 254,600. So that's part of the management analyst position that's being added is going to the Social and Human Services Fund.
All right, hold on, I don't know that I'm on the same line item. So, I guess what, just overall, it feels like there was a lot of sort of reorganizing of the budget, which I think is great. You know, you guys should definitely put it together however you want, but with so much shifting, it was kind of hard to tell exactly what the sort of net changes were. So like, I'm, and I think the paging might be off. So I'm looking at the page that says page 24 of 92, which is the administrative services, right? Is that the right page, Aaron?
No, you're looking for Social and Human Services Department expenditures. That should be the title of it.
You want to look at page 33 of 92.
Thank you, Mayor. That is very helpful. All right. So if I go, okay, here we go. So 33 of 92, okay, so yeah, so I see the salary, so the salary's increasing, so are we getting an additional part-time staff person there? Is that what that increases?
So that's the management analyst position that's partly to the Social and Human Services Fund that we talked about.
Okay. Got it.
It's, it's to help support.
Just out of curiosity, the.
It's to help support our human services and our health and human services.
Okay. And I see that the, the salary goes up by, you know, roughly maybe 50%, but the benefits more than double. Is that just an estimate? Because that just seemed kind of odd to me.
It, it's just a calculation. We can go back and, and drill down if you want that detail, but we get that from our personnel runs off of payroll and HR.
Okay. It, it just didn't seem proportionate at all, right? That the benefits would double, but the salary was only increasing by less than 50%. So that just seemed a little odd. And then I see the professional services also increased by like 10%. What, what was that, and do we know?
Councilmember Stewart, this is Mike Sugg. A big part of that increase, hello, the big part of the increase in professional services were the increase in the human services grants that the council approved as part of the commission's recommendation a couple weeks ago.
And that's, that's just put in professional services? That's where that appears?
Correct.
Okay. But we didn't approve 800,000 or almost 900,000 for human services?
That's a two-year number. It's 440.
Right, so we, I don't, okay, all right, excellent. And then it looks like from an affordable housing, like the arch staff stays the same, correct?
Correct.
That's not really increasing, so we're not taking in contribution for affordable housing.
So the trust fund contribution would stay the same, that 100,000 per year? That's the 200,000 over the two-year period? There is an addition in 2022?
All right. Cool. All right. So first, before I dive too deep into all of this, I wanted to thank you guys. I know putting together this budget is a huge, huge undertaking, so I really appreciate all the work from all the staff on that. A couple of things, just kind of asking, so the budget stays, I mean, it goes down a little bit, which is great, but that is also not including any, anything from a, a tip, a transportation improvement plan, or a capital, a six-year capital improvement plan for that type of infrastructure, correct?
I'm not sure I follow your question. It does include capital, but it only has the two years, and we reduced those capital expenditures because you're very limited on your restricted funding. I, I did not want to include capital projects that included extra expenditures on your reserves without the council specifically weighing in. I felt otherwise it was less transparent, so I limited how much would be budgeted.
Okay, because, because in your, in your opening statement, which, again, thank you for that, you, you call out the fact that we don't have a six-year approved tip, and you actually say, we don't have a six-year tip or a six-year capital improvement plan this year. And, and you kind of call out that you didn't want any of that to prejudice the, the hearing board's process. The only thing that I have a concern about is that in, in doing that, we are putting all of the, you know, the, we've heard very strongly from the community that they really want us to build out our infrastructure, and I feel like we're really putting all of that on hold, and we're not budgeting for it. So while, in general, it looks like it's a good thing our budget's going down, but in fact, we've stripped out a fairly significant amount of, of potential capital projects, right, in terms of that infrastructure, so.
No, let me, let me correct you on, let me correct you on something here. In the beginning of my budget message, I identify that the budget has gone down, and it's gone down because there are a significant number of projects that were budgeted in the couple previous years. Those budgets did not include the four-year, you'd say budget years, three, four, five, and six, in any of those times that the tip, because they're outside of your biennial budget. So don't mix up those.
Totally.
Those issues, okay? And it doesn't preclude the council from doing study sessions and talking about budgets, but we did not include it in this process for the reasons I stated of not wanting to prejudice the board, but also in just trying to focus on our two-year budget. But as I point out in my message, it doesn't preclude the council from doing other budgeting and studying evaluations separate from this project, and then doing an augmentation of that. But we recommended you do that on some of those transportations outside of or after the Growth Management Hearing Board rendered its decision.
Okay, thanks for that. One question, again, just pulling from your opening statement, you talk about wanting to add, you know, from the police services study, that we recommend increasing, an increase in staffing to provide better coverage to respond to the town center area. But since the town center hasn't really started building out very much, is there an opportunity for us to potentially delay adding some of that staff and this saving money until we start to see that build-out actually start to happen?
I, I think that's a very important question that you ask, and I addressed it because your, your study identified and recommended because of the anticipated growth. But then in my budget message, I say that that growth has been, has been delayed. However, and the chief could speak more specifically to this, his response numbers and staffing indicates that now we need to add it. The study recommended that you add it two years ago, so you have delayed that two years, but now there's a trend increasing, shows an increase in response activity, and we've had issues with how the sheriff's carrying its vacancies, and the chief is challenged nearly every day with keeping the positions filled. And that's why it convinced me that I needed to make a recommendation that those positions finally be brought online. And the way the sheriff works is once we identify those, you pay for nearly nine months before those officers show up on your doorstep because of the compounded training time. Now, compounded is not the right word, just because of the training time, getting them up to speed. And we can talk in more detail, or I can have the chief speak to that if you need further explanation on that.
So we have to start paying for them hypothetically in January, but we wouldn't actually get any officers on the ground until September or October? Is that what I heard you say?
That, that's, that's correct, but I'm going to have the chief come to the lectern and address it more succinctly. And he's approaching it now.
Awesome, thank you.
Green light. Mayor, Council. So, sorry about that, I have to mask. Specifically, what we're talking about there is, it's about a nine-month process, and that includes the, the hiring, the academy, the post-academy, and ultimately the, the training that takes place then through the end of probation of one year. So that's why we don't see them on the ground. You wouldn't see them on the ground if you were a, if the city had its own police department. There'd still be a training, especially in the Phase Two, where they're not considered an independent officer that's doing their own work. So that's, that's just the time it takes, so we're paying for that, but that body doesn't exist. There are times and opportunities where they can come to us sooner, and depending on what happens with the sheriff's office budget, that is, there's potential for that to occur, but that's, that's a flexible time schedule that we can't depend on.
Currently, I would.
So you're talking.
Excuse me, one second.
Sorry, go ahead.
Currently, Chief, I expand on the fact that because of some of those delays and where the sheriff is at, we're carrying 3.75 vacancies now, which is challenging, and we need, in, in part, our staffing or our SROs are helping with that.
Right. So ultimately, what we're looking at, we have 18 officers, I think I've mentioned this before, we have 18 officers assigned to patrol. If you were to look at just the, the basic numbers of approximately 7.2 personnel to staff one district for 24 hours, seven days a week, that means we would have to have about 21.6 officers just to maintain a minimum of three staffing, which during swing shift really isn't enough, but that is our minimum. So we're below minimums for a relief factor as we currently stand if we were fully staffed. So that's one aspect of it. Second aspect is that part of our inter-local agreement with the sheriff's office states that the cities will share vacancies, and those numbers are, there's a percentage based on the size of each city. We currently are 3.75. So I carry 3.75 vacancies that are, that I'm unable to use from a staffing model. Addition to that, I have one officer out on long-term upwards of six months medical leave, and we are actually carrying four real vacancies at this point in time. So those are the numbers that I deal with, and again, that's already below what should, what the norm is for a relief factor.
Got it. So the, the, you talked about the academy and the, sort of the probation and training. So the assumption is that all of the officers that would be brought on would all be brand-new straight out of the academy? Is that the, the most cost-effective way of hiring in officers?
No, that's actually not the assumption. The assumption is, is that this is a new position that we're adding to our budget. Therefore, that body will be added into the overall sheriff's office personnel and staffing. So ultimately, when we select an officer, we can select a senior officer that has fantastic experience, or a lateral officer that's come in from another agency. So the officer that we select ultimately is our decision, and that can happen, as I stated, sooner than nine months. But when adding, it's a new body that's being hired to the overall pool, and so that's what that delay is.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I guess the delay, I guess the, the surprise part there is that we pay when there's nobody, that we'd be paying for some long period of time while somebody's going through that, so that was just a little surprising. One other question around the police stuff, it occurred to me as I was going through the budget, what, what's happened to our Healthy Communities Coalition? I know that last year in the fall, when we had our challenges with the, the drug overdoses in the community, and we know that with the lockdowns and things, that some of those mental health challenges are maybe more acute, that we were looking to really lean on that Healthy Communities Coalition. And I think, Mr. City Manager, I saw that you have added another 0.75 FTEs for administrative staff for, for police, and I thought that part of that was to help support the Healthy Communities Coalition. So if, if you guys could speak to that, that would be great.
So the Healthy Communities Coalition still exists, and Rita, I believe, is, oversees It, it transitioned so that that was through the city, and so, and the body, the, the administrative support for the police department, we have had no backup. So when our administrative person leaves or is on vacation or is sick, we, that we have to close the front office. person leaves, or is on vacation, or is sick, we, we have to close the front office. So we have had no support. And so the, the background, the expertise, the familiarity, it made much more sense to assign that person to the police department, get that training, get that background check, and then use that person to support staffing on the city side as opposed to the other way around, because that wasn't consistent. That wasn't addressing human services.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I appreciate you answering all those questions. That's excellent. Moving on to other things. So appreciate also that we're looking at the fire, the remodels and upgrades to the firehouses, which is absolutely important. One question there, as we're looking at doing that, are we factoring in environmental considerations, right? So as we look to do some of these upgrades, are we looking at making sure that we're making them as environmentally sustainable as possible? And while that may be a little bit extra cost upfront, it can have some significant savings over the long term. And also, if you look at some of the legislation that's going through at the state level, I just want to throw that out there, that we should make sure that we're looking at that and factoring that in.
Well, we'll include it as we move along. We're going to look at the cost-benefit analysis of trying to improve the livability of the stations. I mean, if it means glazing on windows, that's a requirement under the building code. Whether or not we're able to do some other things, we're trying to figure out how to accommodate the best livability and modifications in the station with a given certain amount of funds. Right now, you are looking at 40, $45 million on replacing three fire stations. The chief and I have been working together. One fire station down on 212th is just going to get some basic, that's $400,000 for the apron and a sewer hookup and no other improvements, because it was, it was upgraded not too long ago. But the other fire stations, we're trying to look from a practical aspect of what we can do. You're dealing with stations that were built in approximately 1988. They're structurally sound. But we'll wait and see what the architects recommend as we're moving through this, because we'll have to build it, the improvements to current code. But I'm not sure whether or not other sustainability and environmental other concerns. It'll depend on a cost-benefit analysis.
Okay, yeah. And I would, I would love to see us, I think it was Councilmember Gamblin who said, you know, let's lead the way in this area. And I would love to see us not just go to the minimum code, but to really see, given that we know that the built environment contributes pretty significantly to greenhouse gas emissions. So if there are areas where we can look at that, I would, I'd hope we take advantage of that. Moving on to, just looking at the, the ending fund balance in the general fund, one thing that someone said to me when I first took office was, you know, we have had a pretty large ending fund balance there. And they actually were not happy about that, because they felt like, you know, we're collecting their tax dollars and we're not a bank. And so I just want to make sure that we're being mindful that if we're going to be, you know, asking to increase people's taxes and we're still carrying, you know, $50 million in an ending fund balance, I realize that only 27 million of that, only 27, would be in the general fund. But that still seems like a pretty large dollar figure that we're, we're holding on to of taxpayer dollars, especially in a year like this year. So I just, I just want to be mindful of that. I also, let's see, just, another question, and maybe, Mr. City Manager, I can ask you offline, but you, you made mention of the many infrastructure needs have been addressed and all of the investments in our infrastructure. It would be, it would be great if we could actually get kind of a, an inventory of what those are, because I know, again, that there's been a pretty, a pretty loud outpouring from the community that they feel like we haven't been making the appropriate investments in our infrastructure and that we've fallen behind on that. So that might be some useful information for us to have there. Because again, you kind of talk about some major transportation and stormwater infrastructure projects, construction on a pay as we go. But again, I think people feel like that hasn't happened. So it'd be great to get some of that detail. I don't know if that's something we could get from you.
Well, I'm not sure whether I can quantify that for you. I can go back and get historical information. I'm just trying to, trying to say this correctly. And I, the city, the history of where the city has spent its money is the history of where the city has spent its money. What the response is from the community, being new here, I can only measure that. I'm not responsible for it. And you probably know, along with the rest of the council, what the community is satisfied with and what they're not. I would say, in response to the ending fund balance question, that you have to look at cash flow. I'll budget all day long against what my revenue should be and my expenses. And if I'm contributing money to the general fund, which I hope I am and not spending it on operational issues, then all that money is available for cash. I think we did discuss the 10% retainer, and because of the stability of the community, many communities have 20% or 25%. But that 50 million has a lot of restrictions on it, which I think we tried to point out in the budget. And the community, as well as the council, needs to really reflect on that because it is restricted and/or has a proprietary use for capital expenditures that we've already identified. And if we were not to identify that, then it would give a misleading look. But if you're just looking at the, the number in itself, it's important that we reflect back on that. The other capital, or the other balance of 27 million, that is money that the council can then direct on other projects, as I've left open in my message and in the presentation. And that's a deliberation for the council. My concern is how the operational side of the budget is best reflected. And asking for the tax increase is based on the fact that you can't make your cash flow based on the current level of services that you are requesting the city to fund with your current cash flow. You don't have the revenue stream going forward. And I think the break-even analysis that we did and that Aaron proposed reflects that. And it would be irresponsible of me to present that as an acceptable level. The city has been able to do it in the past. They desired to do it in the past. I believe in budgeting differently, but I don't have the luxury of being able to identify a highs level, a higher level of revenue surpluses and lower expenses. So it's, it's just taking the time to reflect on that. Like I said, the council, you and the rest of the council have the ability to identify other sets of capital projects or to detail us back to identify what some of those could be. So just coming back to you with a list, a list of other projects would be, I can provide you what the council has identified in the past. But you still need to provide a funding mechanism of that, and that might be how you wish to use the reserve. But again, that's, that's a deliberation for the council, and that's why we have a budget study session and before we get to the public hearing.
Perfect. And I think we've gotten a number of pieces of feedback around the stormwater, that while we do have a, some of those restricted funds are for stormwater, it does sound like we have, we should probably have some more discussion around where we might go to invest some of that as opposed to holding on to it in that fund. But really, go ahead and put it out there. Again, I think the positive effects there on the environment would probably really be worthwhile. I have a number of, you know, it took, it took a while to kind of get through this. We got this last week. I appreciate it. I do have a lot of details, and I don't want to hold people here forever, but I have a, a number of detailed questions around, you know, just places where I saw big changes in, in, in the budget. So I'll try to hit just a couple of those and then maybe follow up and email, and maybe we can find a way to get that out to the public. But the one that jumps out, one of them that jumps out at me is, is in the general fund revenues. So I'm on page 18 of 92, where it says outside services plan review. And that went from a $600 line item to a $580,000 line item. So I was wondering if we could understand what, and that's in the, in the revenues. So I was wondering what that is.
So outside services plan review would be your community development department if they would contract plan review? So it's kind of available for expedited services? That's, that's part of the overall permitting process and agency? So the revenue would come in to pay for those contracted plan review?
And we increased the...
Okay, that's in net income?
We also built in a little more cost for official, building official work and restructured, reorganized our internal to where we didn't have a building official on the inside because the complicated plan reviews weren't coming in. A lot of them were less complicated and could be processed inside without that higher-level position. And we didn't want to add just another position. So some of that is all professional services for some of the more complicated and some of the more extensive work that the community development is doing. And if we need to get into that more, in more detail, David is probably on the line. So if David's available, could you speak to that issue?
This is David Pyle. I don't know if you can hear me?
Yes, thanks, David.
Yeah. Can you kindly reframe the question? I just want to make sure I understand.
Sure. So I'm just trying to understand, on page 18 of 92, there's a line item that says outside services plan review. And I, it looks like, based on, because this is general fund revenues, it looks like that line item goes from 600 in the last budget to 580,000 in this budget. And so that just jumped out at me as a, as a huge difference. And I'm just trying to understand, you know, from my perspective, what I did was I kind of went through the budget and just looked for where the big changes were and focused on those. So I was just trying to understand what that change was. And so is it, in fact, a revenue change? So we're going to get an additional 500,000 in revenue? Do we turn around and spend that? So it's really a budget-neutral item? And if so, we can just move on?
Yeah. So these are on-call contracts that allow for elasticity in service for, for staff. So what, what happens is, we maintain a very, what I would consider skeletal staff for permit review. We have a baseline staff that if, that if all things were consistent, we could keep up with the demand for permit review, and we could field questions and help citizens, et cetera. That said, the development world is extremely volatile, and at times, we see floods of applications come in the door. And other times, we, we can, we can trim back to our base, our baseline level of, of in-house staff. So what this does, what this does is two things. One is it allows us to provide plan review services when we simply can't keep up with the pace of applications coming in the door. It allows us to turn applications around and issue permits and allow people to get under construction in, in a, in a reasonable timeframe that we can advertise and we can stick to. So in, in times when we don't need that service, the consultant is not paid, and it's an on-call service, so we don't need to utilize it. At times when we do need it, it's a pass-through through our budget in that when the, we receive the consultant's bill, we do bill it back towards the applicant's permit review fee deposit, which is a restricted revenue source. We can't spend it on anything else in the city except for permit review. Under state law, there's a restriction on how we can spend permit review fees received for review of permit applications. The other item is related to on-call services that are niche discipline services, like environmental, like a wetland scientist, or like a geotechnical engineer. And these are services that we rely upon in order to be able to provide a full-fledged qualified wetland scientist, for example, that we would not be able to maintain the credential of, by having an in-house staff person dedicated to that position. So what this allows us to do is to, when we receive an application, our generalist staff, our, our baseline skeletal staff, screen those applications. And then if there is an environmental issue that is included with the application, whether it be a request for a wetland buffer averaging, or buffer enhancement, or a shoreline-related issue, we then route those applications to the third-party on-call consultant, who then provides a support service to our review staff, and then, and also provides a, I also want to say a confirmation of information received, because our generalist staff are not geotechnical engineers, or wetland scientists, or shoreline ecologists. And the issue there is that with a small shop like we have, we cannot staff that range of services in-house. We would have, you know, 12 staff, because we have to have those disciplines represented. So again, these services are billed back to the permit applicant's deposit, and it's a pass-through cost that then, yep. So I hope that explains it. It's, it allows us to be elastic.
Excellent. And it sounds like it's effectively budget-neutral, because we, we charge people for those services?
That's correct.
Okay, excellent. That's what I'm looking for.
You're correct. That's the intent, is it's to be a break-even, because we can't, you know, make a profit in there. And if, any other questions, if you want to put those in writing, that way we can have myself or staff address all of those, and then we'll get them out to the rest of the council.
Yeah. A couple of the other just really big ones. And I think Aaron tried to touch on, I feel like we went really fast through some of the, the big differences. But a couple of them, I noticed, like in the, in communications, again, there's a, a big increase in salary and benefits there. So is that an additional staff? And if so, how much? And it also, again, looks like the increase in benefits is disproportionately high to the increase in salary there.
We'll go back and take a look at the salary benefit issue, and Aaron may be able to address it. But I also looked at other positions in the city that we hadn't filled and looked at eliminating those. And now we have some increased capacity in our communications with two people, because we're going to address how we do communications in a couple of different areas. We've been doing that through this COVID issue with a contractual, and we've eliminated some contractual services to bring in another person to assist in that regard. So you'll see an adjustment in there.
Is that a plus-one or plus-half on the communications?
Was contracted before, and we were on the inside. So it's, just call it a plus-one for now.
Okay. And then same thing in the, just in the city manager's department, it went from 983 to 1.24. Is that the increase in the admin there? Or that, that looks like it's probably a couple of positions?
It's actually, the city manager position had part of that salary and benefit. When you're looking, comparing it to prior years, in 19 and 20, that position had part of, the city manager's position was in the community development department and their salary lines. And in '21 and '22 period, we're moving 100% of it into the city manager's department. So it's showing up as a higher number in the '21, '22 period. But no...
That is not an additional salary for the...
Oh, I got to write...
Oh, no. That's just a change to the allocation of the position, how it was showing up in the general fund.
There's no point in giving partial allocations to other people's budgets. That's what was done. Sometimes that's appropriate when you've got a redevelopment agency and you're playing a dual role as the administrator of the redevelopment agency. But I told them to eliminate it and put it all back in the manager's office, so it was more transparent.
Excellent. That's excellent. The next one is called legal services and public The next one is called legal services and public safety expenditure. So, but when I look through this, this looks like it's really all legal fees. I'm not sure what the public safety expenditure piece is in that, in that fund.
Okay, council member Stuart, while they're looking up the answer to that one, I'm going to ask that, you guys keep looking up the answer to that one. I'm going to ask that you write down your questions and we're going to come back around so that I can let some of the other council members get some questions in before they fall asleep on us.
Okay, can I ask one more? I have one more really big one and then I want us to move on.
Okay.
And that is, so you had mentioned how we had moved the emergency manager to the east side fire and rescue budget over the course of this past year. But I also noticed that we now have an emergency management department and we have salaries there of 234,000 plus benefits. So is that above and beyond? Is that something separate from the emergency manager? Or is that really the emergency manager? And isn't that included then in the east side fire and rescue budget?
Well, it's, the emergency manager position was added during the 1920 biennium. So when you're comparing that biennium to the 21 and 22 biennium, the position was originally an in-house city position and then it was contracted out during 2020. So it's showing up in the 21, 22 proposal as the professional service contracted position. So that's, it's kind of the change over that four-year period from 19 to 20 to 21 to 22 on how those emergency management services are provided by the city.
Okay, but when I look at page 21, 29 of 92, it's not showing up as salary. It's not showing up as professional services. And the total, the total for the department, so the emergency management department expenditures went up 30% from 2019, from 1920 to 2122 and 47% from 2017, 18 to 2122. So I'm just trying to get a sense of what is included in that.
Erin's taking a look at it right now, but you also have the inclusion in there that we started budgeting for the inclusion of the EMPG grant that we get from the feds that wasn't budgeted before. And it, and it limited how we could purchase items if that grant wasn't recognized. Because when the grant came in, then you could expend monies and that's not a proper way to budget. So that we, so that's probably some of the reflected change. And we have money, the city has money for the emergency management operations that are monies we spend or we direct EFER to spend on our behalf. So Erin and Mike are, Erin and Mike are continuing to look it up. Did you find it? If not, we can address it.
Yeah, so basically, the net amount has shown up in professional services of the difference between the, doing it as an in-house city position and a contracted position through EFER. So that's one issue. The second item is the EMPG grant-related expenditures that are showing up in 21, 22 budget that are not in the 1920s. So as those EMPG grants are applied for, these would be the expenditures associated with those grant funds. So when we're just looking at the expenditure side, it has to account for those expenditure increases.
And Chief Clark is going to go to the lectern to speak to the issue as well.
Just really quick, because I'm just trying to reconcile things. So the salary showing up in the emergency management department expenditures, is that the same, is that for the emergency manager position?
Yes, that's the emergency manager.
Or is that a separate?
Not a separate.
And so I guess my question is, why is it showing up here as opposed to in the EFER budget?
Council member Stuart, this is Chief Clark. It is not in the EFER budget. It is reflected in the Sumamish budget and there's a separate contract to what it's paid. It is, it is showing up, it's neutral in the EFER budget. It's an expense and a revenue, just like what David Pyle was describing on the contractors earlier, neutral in our budget and it's an expense in your city of Sumamish budget.
Okay, all right, thank you. That, that helps, just trying to reconcile this. Okay, I have a lot more questions, but it sounds like we'll let someone else go and then we'll come back to me.
Okay, council member Ross.
On the crossover point chart, I wanted to drill down a little more on that. And it's my understanding that your, first of all, Erin, most revenue source for the street paving project, including the street fund prior, is from general operating revenues or normal revenue sources? Is he still there? Or Dave?
I think I heard what you said. So you're asking about the pavement management program?
Yes, yes. You said earlier in the meeting that the revenues are coming through the general fund for the street paved project. And during today's discussion, we're calling it a one-time expenditure. And in that one-time expenditure classification normalized, so shows that you're structurally balanced. Revenue equals expenses and you're not crossing over with expenses exceeding revenues. Now, is that fair to say that it balances from a structural perspective if you consider street pavement as a one-time expenditure?
Yes.
And, and so then I go, and when we look at the prior years, was that normalized as well? Did we pull out the street pavement and consider that one time in prior comparative? Okay.
Yeah, in that chart.
So going forward, okay, so, so I guess what I struggle with, and thank you for that, is that we do this every year. We have a recurring street pavement program, but then we call it one, one time, which balances the structural perspective of our operating fund. But it doesn't, we're still going to have to draw from operations to pay for that one-time expenditure. So the revenues, for example, we showed 106.5 revenues for the biennium and then the street fund transfer, take out 9.3 out of that and 2.8 for the gas, gas tax transfer from the street fund, those are non-revenue sources. Normalize the revenue you have on your biennium budget is 106.5 minus 9.3 minus 2.8 or 94.4. Then you can compare that to the 108.2 biennium expenses for the general fund. So right away, I'm identifying in the two-year budget, a 13.8 million structural gap unless you take out and consider those expenditures as one time. But I think that's disingenuous, wouldn't you think? I think we still have a gap, structural gap in a continued street overlay program.
So in the numbers that you were using, that, that includes transfers. So you'd need to take the fund-to-fund transfers out of that, out of those totals. But the principle of treating the overlay program as, as one time, that's, that's correct. If you wanted to change the definition of, of how to be structurally solvent going forward and include either, either a funding mechanism for ongoing sustaining the pavement overlay program at its existing level or make other adjustments to, to account for it in the operating side.
But you're drawing on the operating general fund.
Ending fund balance.
The street fund or the general fund balance. And that transfer is absolutely relevant as you come out of the gate because now, going forward, unless you don't spend any money on the street overlay, it's absolutely a structural concern of mine going forward, unless you stop the street overlay program, which we are not doing. So I really want to think hard about that because you're going to have to have a funding source from the general fund to fund street overlay. And you can't just expand it and then, and then take it out magically on paper and say we're balanced. That's, that's not, it's not a fair representation of our structural balance. So I want, if you could look at that, I'm not going to push it. I think I'm clear on what my concern is. And I want to come back and see how, how we balance the budget structurally, including street overlay, because I think that is a recurring expenditure and we got to be straightforward. If it's a reduced recurring, that's good. We don't have to reduce costs or fund additional revenue to accommodate that. So that's my main concern about the crossover points. I don't think we're there, in my opinion.
Well, that's part of what we're trying to correct. I'm trying to correct what I think is reasonably correctable in stages. I can't, I'm not going to be able to do it all in one shot. And that's the way the city has been treating it for years and years and years and years. And what I did this year is significantly reduce the contribution and so that we could get closer to balance. And it's just a rationale, to be frank with you.
Right.
That you're using it as one time or you're going to use it as ongoing. Because you choose to use the REIT in another manner. And your REIT is questionable as to whether or not you're going to make those numbers. So you won't get any disagreement from either me or Erin. It's just, your, your further budget, deficit budgeting, we're just helping you get there little by little. So no argument, you've got a bigger gap.
Right, let's call, let's call it what it is. Let's not normalize it. Let's keep our eye on it and close that gap. And it may not be overnight, but let's show a plan and a progress towards getting there to be structurally balanced because that is a big gap. That's all I'm asking. With respect to the property tax 1%, what is the assumed inclusion in our revenue projection in this budget? Is it banking all years or is it one year? I mean, it went up 7.5 million in property tax revenue, which could be part of the increased development. But what is the assumed 1% assumption?
So what's assumed in the projection is the use of bank capacity for the 21, 22 period as well as the authorized 1%, allowable 1% increase in both of those years. So you have the cumulative effect over that two-year period occurring in comparison with the 2019, 2020 budget that had neither the bank capacity or the 1% in both of those years.
Okay.
So the, the amount of...
The maximum, yeah, right. The highest revenue opportunity. Right?
I'm not, so you're using all of the bank capacity?
Taking all, taking all the bank capacity plus the current 1% is the maximum we can increase property taxes is included in the budget.
That's the maximum that's councilmatically allowed, yes. Right, that's your 2.4 million, was it, Erin? And that's what comes out to $153 a year, about $12.75 a month.
Thank you for, for that. I guess I'll, council member Stuart did a really good job joining down from the detail questions, so I'm not going to ask those or add to that. I may just send, if I, if we send questions, can maybe, can we put it in an Excel matrix or something where we can see the answers to all the questions as well as bring it to the next, some of the next means? And that would be a good way to communicate to the public some of the questions that are asked that weren't, that were done through email.
Why don't you just send in the questions? We'll figure out how we can answer them. I, I don't know how to answer your question there.
Okay, I'm not sharing enough, I'm leaving it. And then one final question, when I looked at the legal budget, I think council member Stuart touched on a little of this, but I want to ask, maybe I ask it again in a different way. There's 476K of cost for the paralegal in-house attorney proposal and the, or actually 698.6. The baseline, which would have been the portion of the contract service, was 476. That's a couple hundred thousand difference. But then the question is, as far as litigation, is there, and I notice litigation actually went down in total cost, is there, is there some services provided by the paralegal and in-house attorney proposal that is going to actually also reduce litigation costs, making up, almost balancing the baseline of 699 versus 476 plus other savings on litigation? Is that fair to say or are we going to?
Yes, no.
Speak slightly.
There might, I can't speak to those exact numbers there, but the whole idea is yes. We're bringing, we brought, already brought down in here the litigation in doing these estimates. And further, as we analyze our cost, prosecutor, public defender, and we work through specific contracts, we intend to bring those down further because doing the hearing officer work, a lot of that will be able to be handled by in-house, not all of it, but a lot of it. Some of the PRR work will be able to be handled inside. And there are some litigation expenses that we pay over and above our monthly contract services that will be able to not be billed for because we would be able to handle it in-house. But that's not to be saying, to be very clear, in-house attorney is not going to handle all litigation. That's not possible.
No, no, no. In fact, I'm sure a lot of it will be contracted for the litigation portion, but I guess there'd be some, you're saying there is some prep and administrative duties, preparing for litigation that were normally billed as part of the litigation that we can absorb in-house with our staff members paralegal. Did I put that correctly?
Right, and will significantly decrease some of our legal risks.
Right, right. Okay, no, thank you. I, I think I'll, any further questions, my additional questions, I'll send email because I know we want, have others who want to get through and we're late. So thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to ask a few questions.
Okay, next up is council member Gamblin. I'm going to back up and hit deputy mayor.
Great, thank you. Hang on a second, let me, I feel like my notes on here are so disorganized. Hold on just a second. It takes me a second as I go through all of my things here. So we have a number of 96,000 listed for the affordable housing sales tax. Is that an anticipation from 1590?
He answered yes, and that was also my question, so thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, there's, there's two different affordable housing bills, so the one you referenced, I think is a different one than the one that's previously.
Okay, there's House Bill 1590.
So, sorry, Erin was...
So this, so the one that's included in the budget is the one that council already took action on previously?
Okay, okay. So we, so it is not included in the budget if we take action on House Bill 1590?
You're right, the new one, yes.
Okay. So I noticed for code violations, we go from 1,000 to 50,000. What are we anticipating? Why? Is that because we're going to actually, you know, have more code enforcement or why are we anticipating such a huge uptick?
I'm not sure. I'll have to have Dave address that issue. David?
Okay.
Your volume is very low, David.
David, we can't hear you?
It helps to pull down the microphone.
Oh, excellent.
Apologies there. Yeah, so I would like to ask a point of clarification as to if this means that there's an increase in revenue or an increase in cost?
Well, now I got to scroll up, David. It just says budget, in the general, this is under the general fund revenues, so it would be revenue.
So, it's a good one. I, I don't know the answer to that. It might be that we, we are anticipating moving to more of a fine-based structure... be that we, we are anticipating, um, moving to more of a fine-based structure, and with an update of Title 23, and we're hoping to start to recover some of the costs of operation there, uh, but without going back to our code enforcement staff, and, um, one of our management analysts to ask why that number was increased, I, I can't speak, um, on that right now.
We'll, we'll, we'll give you a more comprehensive, uh, answer on that, if, if you would send it to me. Um, Christie, that'd be helpful.
Good question, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, for what it's worth, I liked Councilmember Ross's idea of having kind of an Excel spreadsheet. Um, I know we've done that in the past for issues, that we've done kind of a matrix, the questions and all the answers, that way all the council members, um, you know, can kind of see and reference. Um, in, in public works, um, in general fund expenditures, we have, um, and these are things I can email to, I don't mean to suck up time here. Um, you know, like, our engineering goes from 2.6 million in the last biennial budget to 4.5, and because we didn't adopt a six-year tip, I'm curious, like, what engineering in public works is?
Jeff, are you on the line? I think we, uh, we limited some of our projects to just the engineering phases, like Issaquah, Fall City Road, Phase 2, but Jeff, are you, uh, available?
Uh, yes, I am, and I'm going to defer to Cheryl on this, because I think what this happens to be dealing with is, uh, bringing the, the different funds together, or the different portions of funds, um, because they were separated before, but, uh, Cheryl, are you able to help with this just real quick?
Yeah, I am here, this is Cheryl Patton. Uh, a, a large part of that is the co, is, uh, the fact that we've combined the 101 fund and the 001 fund, uh, it, it, but we can certainly give you more details on that one. It is, it is, because we combined those together, it's, it's a little hard to compare biennial budgets to biennial budgets.
Okay.
But, uh, but we can, we can certainly give you more details.
Okay, that's where maybe after getting some of these things and having footnotes might be helpful, because, just, yeah, if we're not comparing apples to apples, because I mean, you know, the way it looks, we, we are, so, that, just as an aside, that might be helpful for council. Um, flipping through some of my, oh, so, um, and let me get to the header here. This is city council department expenditure. Um, under SDA, we have an increase for the 2021-2022 budget. Um, did we get those numbers directly from SDA? Because I know SDA is not increasing dues next year. They went flat. So, unless they're having a significant uptick for the following year, which they have not determined yet, I'm just curious why we went 92,000.
Uh, I, I'm not, I'm not sure. Aaron's trying to look up the detail on that, um, and we'll just get back to you. It could be that somebody used an inflationary number on it, um, or a couple line items were combined. I, I can't speak to it. Aaron's going to speak.
Yeah, it, it would help if, uh, when you send in your, uh, questions with the inputs, if you can, uh, list the account number that you're looking at, so that'll help us zero in on exactly what line you're looking for.
Yeah, I'm sure, like, trying to find exactly what I'm speaking to, I'll definitely do that, Aaron. Um, this is a small, like, really small thing, but I, I, I noticed under, um, and again, this is city manager department expenditures, under meeting meal expenses, and the footnote there says that it's the mayor, deputy mayor, agenda meetings for five to eight attendees, and it's basically lunch, and we haven't done lunch for those meetings in two years, so, we certainly probably spent $600 in the last biennial budget, and we certainly aren't going to spend $5,000, because we don't do lunches anymore.
Well, now you can.
Well, you know what, I would say let's save $400.
Thank you.
And not, and not buy lunches.
Okay, yeah, we'll take a look at those, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, so, one, one question I had on legal services is, um, you know, the, the last time we explored potentially, um, in-housing service, there was some discussion of overlap between, um, our existing, um, attorney services, and then in-housing it. It doesn't appear that that's the case here, but I, I just wanted to ask the city manager, if they're just going to make a being cut here, there's no overlap, we're not making it, um, you know, just for, I guess, educating the attorney?
Okay, uh, what I anticipate is that, whether you call it overlap or not, um, I'd anticipate, um, that we would, uh, terminate the existing contract, but there are some things that the Kenyon Law Firm, um, has provided, um, with particular people, um, say in code enforcement, that David and his, uh, department are used to working with, they understand, they're familiar, um, and we would continue those services on a cost basis going forward, just like we would with perhaps another firm, or another specialty. So, in that case, there might be that crossover that you are referring to. Other, otherwise, um, it's a, it's otherwise a clean break in a new contract.
Okay, got it. And then, I think most of my other chicken scratch notes here have been covered by somebody else, but I will, um, send my questions in, um, and I will reference the account number, so that's easy to discern.
Okay, that'd be very helpful, thank you.
Okay, going back, I'm going to, uh, Councilmember Gamblin? Okay, Councilmember Trine?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, uh, should the general fund strategic ending fund balance reserve target of 10% be maintained or increased? The answer for me would be that let's maintain it. Um, are there some programs or services that the council would like to add or cut in 2021 or '22 from your preliminary budget? I think you're hearing a bunch of stuff, uh, whether it's giving you direction, I don't know. Um, I would just say that I'm really excited about you moving to in-house on the attorney, so I'm excited about that. I like the idea that we're moving away from water-based paint on our road to the thermo, so that's a great thing, because that's a, that's a long-term investment, a little expensive upfront, but it'll last longer. So, we're doing, what I'd like to see, uh, is to continue to add stuff like that to the budget, where it's, uh, do it right the first time, maybe have to spend a little bit more money upfront, but then let's do it right the first time. So, if it's even the stormwater basin plans, if it's, has to do with the designs for the, uh, roadways in the city, then let's put, if we got to spend a little bit money, money upfront to get it done right the first time, uh, that's what I'm all for in the, in this budget. Uh, as far as revenue and expenditure items, I will just send you, uh, a couple ideas that I have that you might, uh, find, uh, helpful, or something that, uh, you may just say, you know, we can't do that at this time. So, I will send those to you in an email. But I want to thank Aaron, good job, and the department heads, uh, excellent job on bringing forward, uh, biennial budget for us, and definitely appreciate all your hard work. My fellow council members, to you, since I have the floor, it's five minutes to 10. Our agenda time was 10 o'clock, so, if we could try to keep to our, our comments to a minimum, I'd really appreciate your professionalism on that point, uh, and have some respect for our other council members as well, for our time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Okay, Councilmember Ritchie?
Uh, I will only, um, say that I'm grateful for the time and energy that everybody put into the, uh, budget, and I will, I've got a series of comments here. I think Councilmember Ross and Councilmember Stewart addressed quite a bit of things that I had questions about. I have a couple other things that I wanted to bring up, but, um, out of respect to Councilmember Trine's point, I will pass and send my questions to the city manager, and hopefully, to echo Councilmember, Deputy Mayor, uh, sorry, Deputy Mayor Malchow's point, that we can have them in some sort of spreadsheet format, because I did personally find that effective in terms of sorting and organizing, and I work in those things every day, so it's, it's helpful to me to see them that way. But, um, thank you, staff and city manager, for the time, and Councilmembers Ross and Stewart, for the questions you asked. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, um, and, and we'll, uh, use that spreadsheet.
Okay, then I, um, I've got some comments, I'm going to send in my questions. Um, I agree with maintaining the 10% balance. Um, I love the idea of the in-house attorney, I think that's going to save us a lot of time and a lot of money. Um, I'm surprised that the contract cities are carrying the, um, the 3.75 that we have, that just really surprised me when I read that. I didn't realize that we were doing that, but, anyway, and I'm glad we're adding the extra onto the police officer's contract, and staff did an awesome job. So, thank you to everybody who worked on that, you guys did a great job. Um, and I will send in my questions, a lot of them were asked tonight, so, um, they're pretty minimal, and I look forward to seeing the spreadsheet, multicolored, I hope.
Multicolored, we'll see what we can do. Uh, thank you, Mayor and council. Staff has put in a tremendous amount of time and effort to, uh, and it sounds like there's a few things that, uh, we need to go through to make sure we can tidy it up a bit, and then get everyone's questions answered. All the questions, uh, that are asked will be provided back to everyone, so they're all, you're all informed.
Okay, I'm going to go backwards, see if there's any other questions that anybody wants to ask, to have an answer to tonight. Okay, I'm going to check in the chat box here. Oh.
Mayor, I, I had-
Okay, I only heard, uh, 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 so, as, is that Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah. Um, really quickly, just on the high level, I'll send in the rest of my detailed questions, but on your high-level questions here, uh, in, in terms of the reserve, I definitely think we should keep it. I thought we had had a conversation before about how our reserve was actually a little bit lower than some others, so, um, maybe just getting some more information about why we think this is an adequate reserve, or if we think it should be more or less, so that we're making sure we get the right reserve. In terms of programs, um, I think there are some places that, I'll put it in my comments that I send in, where I think we can maybe make some cuts, because what I'd love to see us do, uh, that I'm not seeing on here, are some more environmental programs, like making sure we have budget to implement things like the K4C, um, toolkit, so we can start measuring, um, our greenhouse gas emissions. Uh, there's some, a lot of great work being done around the region in terms of social justice and social equity. Um, Issaquah, for example, is looking at, uh, co-responder units, and I know that, uh, our police chief mentioned before that that would, uh, be an excellent way to improve the service to our city, uh, in terms of, you know, having the right kind of folks respond. We don't always need an armed officer to respond to every type of call, and I think that's something we should be looking into. Um, and, uh, also making sure that we have budget to start to do some social justice work, uh, that again, there's a lot of great work being done all around the region, and I think we might be a little bit behind on that, so.
Okay, um, so, put in, uh, put in those questions, so that we can get answers to them, and answers to your comments, and, um, and I look forward to seeing the spreadsheet. Um, any other questions, or anything for the good of the order? Questions, comments? Okay, um, and any reports? City manager? Okay, I see we have two reports here, one from Deputy Mayor, one from Councilmember Stewart. Anybody else have a report? Okay, I wanted to, um, uh, well, I wanted to point out, um, I spoke with, regarding 1590, I had spoke with Issaquah Mayor for about 90 seconds, um, and we talked about, uh, talking to our representatives, so we talked to basically Doc, uh, Councilmember Dombowski, I reached out to Kathy Lambert. Uh, what we're trying to do is make sure that we leave open the option, that we could have small cities who don't get to keep their funds, because they're under 60,000, and larger cities like us, who we have the people, but we're not going to have a lot of money, uh, be able to partner. And that doesn't mean necessarily having to partner with the city next to us, we could partner with North Bend, we could partner with Kirkland, we could partner with another city, to try to do, um, something, uh, with their funds that would be better than just, you know, piddling it away on a small project. So, um, that was the, that was all the conversation was about, that's where it ended, it was about 90 seconds, and I suspect that, and it's going to be on the agenda for next week, so I look forward to expanding on that discussion.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. We, we do have it on the agenda for a discussion topic, and, um, as I was talking with Mike Sugg, um, about having our representative, um, available, he was going to be on the call, uh, available that night anyway, so, um, having some insights from them about, um, anything they've heard, uh, regarding 1590, um, but I don't, I don't believe there's any, uh, prohibit, prohibition? No. Nothing that would prohibit us from partnering with other agencies, um, in that, that I'm aware of, but we'll look at that.
There you go, that's the word. Okay, um, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, I'm looking for-
I move to adjourn.
Thank you, looking for a second.
You don't have to vote on that on the study session, we just go.
Okay, then you're out of here.
Have a good weekend.
Have a great week, see you next week.
Thanks, bye.